Good evening and welcome to our first meeting of September. We've got a Council Chambers. Appreciate you guys being here and those of you also watching us on our Electric City Television. Invocation tonight was given by Councilmember Matt Harbor and the respects of flyers will be led by Councilmember John Roberts. Please rise.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I am thankful that we live in a city and a free country. I pray for the military that is in harm's way today protecting that freedom. I pray for our police and our fire department as they protect our citizens. I pray for all of our city employees that you would help them make good, sound decisions that are positive for our citizens. And I pray for this council that you guide us to make wise decisions that are pleasing in your eyes. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the body of our meeting, we have a couple of things. We have a special recognitions, some special recognitions and a swearing in. And I'll ask Chief Stewart to come up and lead us in the Police Department's part of this. Chief?
Thank you Mayor and thank you Council, as always, to recognize our officers in times of their promotion, which is a great time in their career. Let me ask Lieutenant Vincent Smith to come forward down here. Lieutenant Smith began his career with us as an explorer in 1989 and became a dispatcher for the Sheriff's Office in 93. In 96, Smith became the first explorer to be hired by the Anderson Police Department. He served in the divisions of Street Crimes Unit, Narcotics Warrants, and joined the Traffic Division in 99 when he became Lieutenant. He'll manage our special events here in town, our community meetings, as well as all the Traffic Division activities. Lieutenant, I think you have some people here you'd like to recognize?
Yes, I have my wife, Maybee, my two sisters, Virginia and Denise, and my rock.
All right. I'd like to ask Corporal Justin Henderson to come down here and join you. Corporal Henderson began his career with the Anderson Police Department in February 2010 in the Detention Division. He was transferred to Patrol in 2011, graduated from South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. He's a former member of the Traffic Team and also Field Training Officer for Bravo Shack. Corporal Henderson, you have some folks here you'd like to recognize? Okay, as we prepare to swap out their badges, I'd like to ask Deputy Purdy with the Sheriff's Office to come down and assist me. Purdy worked for the city for many years before he left and went to the Sheriff's Office. All right, gentlemen, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye. Lieutenant Mr. Smith?
On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold.
I will always have the courage to hold.
Myself and others accountable for our actions.
Myself and others accountable for my actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Appreciate it, everybody. Appreciate you.
Chief Horn?
Thank you Mayor, members of Council. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Unfortunately, the first item was a promotion of Engineer Brandon Stroud. He's homesick and couldn't make it with us tonight, so congratulations to Brandon. We hope he gets feeling better. Second is a swearing in. I'd like to call up Matt Green. Matt, I think you have family here you want to recognize tonight? Thank y'all for your future sacrifices. Matt's a graduate of T.O. Hannah High School. He's IFSC accredited as firefighter one and two. He has numerous other firefighting courses and is certified through the South Carolina Fire Academy. He has previous firefighting experience with the Holman Park Fire Department. He's successfully completed all of his probationary period and is qualified to be sworn in. Matt, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
Aye. I agree.
Do solemn swear. To do my duty. As an Anderson City firefighter. To serve my commanding officers. With respect and dignity. To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson. With compassion, courage, and integrity. And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations of the United States of America. The state of South Carolina. And the city of Anderson. So help me God. Congratulations.
The minutes of our August 24th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any. I entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the minutes of August 24th passed unanimously. We have one item, old business, and that item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 1406 Norton Avenue from R5, single-family residential to G.C. general commercial. Ms. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll cover the highlights and Maurice McKenzie is here if you have any questions about the details. Again, the applicant currently owns a body shop at 1503 South Main Street. He also owns the subject property which is behind that business and abuts that business. He wishes to expand his business into this parcel and is currently in the process of demolishing the dwellings on the parcel for you tonight. The Planning Commission considered this request at their September 1st meeting and unanimously recommended denial. They were, their ruling was due to intrusion of the business into the Norton Avenue area, which is predominantly residential. Approximately 30 people opposing the request did attend that Planning Commission meeting. So now it is before you tonight for final consideration.
Thank you. I know we... Hatter and I pack it. Do we have any questions, Mr. McKenzie? I think the petitioner is here and I know I see some of the, I guess some of the 30 that were at the Planning Commission must be here. Does the petitioner have anything that he wants to say to council or address council?
Yes, sir, I do.
Why don't you come up to the podium if you would? And if you would, tell us your name and...
My name is Terry Pirdon, now in Anderson Body Shop. I'm at 1503. And I had bought, recently bought the property behind me. And like I say, I was going to put the wall back there and it wasn't even going to be a driveway back onto Norton. I got the pictures here showing what I was going to do.
Can you pass those around? We'll take them?
Show them the wall you're going to put up here.
This is more like what we're doing. I'm taking that wall. It goes up legos. It all comes apart.
He's going to move back from the street eight feet, put the wall up, and put crepe myrtles and make it all. Yeah.
And just, here's some more pictures right here.
Pass them out to the pictures and show them to you.
Here's just some more pictures.
There's no sidewalk there now. He's going to put a sidewalk in.
And there won't be no driveway down there. It's built. 16 to 18 foot wall goes straight up all the way across. And I'll put a sidewalk in.
So in this space, your plans would be to extend the garage, your garage?
Yes, sir. I'm going to do that up on the front. But I was just wanting to make this for inside parking. And you'll never see a car inside there because the fence will be so high and there won't be nothing but gravel back there. No water, no power, no nothing.
When did you buy the land?
Sir?
When did you buy the land? The lots? It's one lot, right?
Well, there's actually three lots there.
Three lots?
They just made it into one. And I've bought six, I think, lots on that street since then.
Turning the houses down. They were, the lap lane had fallen down. Dangerous for kids, anybody playing around the area, really.
And you couldn't, you couldn't even see my business from Norton up there, nor from mine down to Norton. It was just old house and cudsoo's and the vines and stuff.
Anybody have any other questions while we pass this on?
Could you tell me exactly what you plan to put there?
Ma'am?
What do you plan to expand far there?
I'm expanding that, just to make parking down on that area. Because the driveway's going to come in from the topside. There'll be no way I'll ever get in from Norton up to my business. It'll come in from the south end. The main street.
Just a wall, the sidewalks and the crepe myrtles.
That's all will be down on Norton.
Move back eight feet from the road.
Mayor, have kind of a question.
Yes, Ms. Holden?
Is that what you brought to the Planning Commission, the pictures and all that? Or what was...
Well, what we brought last time is I note about three hours before we came and I didn't, I didn't have time to have no pictures. And I had a photographer come out there and get these pictures for me. I'm sorry I didn't do it the first time, but this...
You say you didn't know about the meeting until three hours before the meeting?
Three to four hours.
Wasn't the property posted for several weeks prior to that?
But I was understanding I was going to get something, you know, showing to what... I ain't never done this before. I didn't know that. I was, you know...
The staff didn't let you know when the meeting was?
Got a letter in the mail and I went up to him on a Friday evening, right before they closed. Matter of fact, they was walking out the gate. And I went up there to see what this was about and then he told me he should, you'll just have to come check with him on a Monday.
Who did you speak with?
One, it was in there where you buy the, your business license, not up on the topside. In there with Sherry, there's that young fella in the back.
Anything else? Thank you. And I know at the Planning Commission, there were... Do you guys got anything else you want to say to us?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, I come, I take cars to Carolina Auto Auction. I come off McDuffie and cut through there. I've been doing it for 15 years. All the houses, I mean, what he's going to do is really going to benefit it. And they all fell down. They'd be unsafe for kids. If anybody's ever gone by there or gone through there, I mean, what he's going to do is going to be a lot better for the place. But...
Okay, we'd like to thank you guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Now, I know there are a few people at the Planning Commission. Is there... There's anybody, is there a group leader, so to speak, or does anybody want to come down and... And say anything? If you just tell us who you are, sir?
Mr. Mayor and to the council, my name is James Blanding. I'm the pastor of Olivet Progressive Baptist Church, right there off of McDuffie, Woodlaw, and Norton. I think, young brother right here, I'm speaking on behalf of the church and the congregation. We have intentions to demolish these old two whole houses that we have on our property, to beautify our community. And I'm new at this myself and I'm trying to learn the laws of Anderson County. But if my understanding is correct, if we allow commercial businesses to come into a residential area, it's going to be an ongoing thing. And after a while, it won't be a residential area again. So just a concern of some of the neighbors. Steal water, water running into his yard, things of that nature, killing his grass. Water's being collected, mosquitoes. The fumes of the older people that lives in that community from the painting and gases and stuff is really bothering their health. So we just asking that the council would consider not allowing this business to expand into the community. This is a community. And those people have been living there in that community for quite some time. And I've only been there for four years, but I have a concern because of the church family and that community.
Thank you, Reverend. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Latika Keesley. My grandfather lives at the lot that's right beside of where he's wanting to do this demolition and all this stuff that he's trying to put the cars and junk cars or whatever he's putting right there. He is a cancer survivor. He's been living in that house since the 70s. And that's not going to be good for his health. It's not going to be good for the community. It's not going to be good for that street. And even since when we left the committee meeting, the, what, early this month? Not even 30 minutes after we left this place, he called the police on my grandfather for a dog that was in the yard. And it's just been vindictive and it's, my granddaddy was shooked up by it. He turned around and called him again last week. And it's just, it's just been ongoing since this whole thing started and it's damaging his mental health. And I don't like it at all.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Natasha and I'm there 24/7. And, you know, I understand that he wants to expand his business, but he's not going about it the right way. Like, he's been harassing us. He said he had a photographer there to take pictures of the lot, but the photographer wasn't only taking pictures of the lot. They were like passing by on a golf cart, maybe three or four times a day, taking pictures of us on the porch. He's been having other people driving by, just watching us like we're animals in a zoo and that's not right, you know, for them to... The only day that I have not seen them come riding down on their golf cart and was today. But every day, they've been coming by, watching us, taking pictures, just harassing us every day. And that's just not right, you know? He's going about it the wrong way.
Thank you.
I feel like if he's there, if he expands his business there, it's going to be a lot of problems. And it shouldn't, it shouldn't happen.
Just from our point of view, we have a zoning issue in regards to just zoning the land. And I don't think, I heard a comment about water runoff and dogs and pictures. At this particular point in time, we're just really talking about zoning. Okay? So the...
And to add to the pastors, the water does run down in front of my grandfather's house and all that stuff. It does happen. And it's not good.
Thank you. Maurice, where's Maurice? Can you talk about the, as far as water and what are we talking about?
I'm not certain what the extent of that is. I believe they're referencing the fact that water from hoses and just whatever is being used at the business is running off into the street and the neighboring properties. I'm pretty certain that's what the concern is.
Hold on, hold on one second. Hold on. I see. Hold on. Is there anybody else in the audience that's against it, this rezon? Yes, ma'am, come up. And again, if you, keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, I want to be able to bring something that is materially different than what somebody else has said, okay? Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Paxton Williams and I go to church over there. And I don't think I should go to church every morning and see all of that. In the beginning, it might be good. It sounds good. But sooner or later, it's going to get raggy and I don't want to go to church. I love my church. And I do, I'll do anything for my church to keep my church up. But I don't want to see nobody put nothing in the back of this church. I'd rather for it to stay the way it is. If he want to do something, let him put some houses to put some of these peoples in that's walking the street. But I don't, I don't want to see that. The neighborhood already, you know, it's not where it should be, but it can be. It can be. And I just don't think a car, garage, or whatever y'all want to call it, it should be in the back of that church. It can be anywhere, but not in the back of that church. That's the church.
Thank you, ma'am. Terry, I forget your last name, Terry.
Pirdon.
Let me just, I want, I want, I want you to address the issue in regards to the water.
Okay. If it rains, the rain's going to come down my yard and down the street. It never gets into nobody's property because it's in the city ravine, in the drain, sidewalk. But not in the yard. And when I wash cars up there, it comes down. I had to pay for water to come out of my yard, down into the city, to go into the city sewer.
Okay. Good.
And, uh... When I bought this place, it was just covered up with everything. And I've had some of the neighbors tell me it's looked so good, but if you was to put new houses in there, first thing you get is plywood over the windows where they won't get broke into. I got a picture up there of a new house and it boarded it up. And as far as the dogs, I know the dogs ain't got nothing to do with it. I called the city to come out there because when I fed my dog, there was 12 puppies. The second time they went out there, they was, he called them. I didn't even call them. And there was seven puppies. Three of them was dead. And it was on a chain. It couldn't even get to the water, nor the babies couldn't even get to the mama. They took what dogs they had left in the city or to be responsible because you're not supposed to put it... Because I called them that the first time and the city police let him go. That wasn't supposed to even happen. He told me himself, he was taking the dogs with him, from 12 puppies down to nothing. And that's animal abuse. But I didn't do it. I went to feed my dog and you see right through the fence. My wife's a dog lover and she told me, she said, something's got to be done with that dog.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rick Earl called him the second time. They come took the dogs. There was three dead dogs laying in the yard left, plus what they took with them.
Well, again, we're kind of, and this city has a lease law. And we're very aware of animal control and...
But they didn't, they didn't, they had the lease law, but they didn't, uh...
And tethering and so forth. But we're kind of getting away from zoning.
I realize we're getting away from it, but at the same token, I wanted to be sure that the lady knew.
Of course, sure enough.
My name's Richard Earl.
Okay.
I called the second time. I called Captain Warren about the dog problem. The dog was cinched up to its neck, couldn't get to no water or food that wasn't even there. Three of the seven puppies were dead. However, I think there's some underlying things here that's going on about this and Terry has cleaned this property up to some part till he found out this was going to happen. But at the same token, you know, the preacher's talking about wanting to tear down some buildings over there. Is he going to want parking lots? Because if it is, it's the same thing. Okay? I mean, if he's going to try to rezon those houses that the church, and I know y'all don't want to step in the way of God's work, because by allowing him to do this is no worse than the city lot over on Southwood Street that sits in front of that church across Southwood Street. There's no blinders up on that fence. And, and we're on the rotation call. We get stuck with those cars. And we have to go through the courts to pay them to get us a title so we may sell them for less than we got involved. It's a problem with all wrecker services, Mr. Mayor and council.
Buck, Buck.
Mr. Harbin and Mr. Roberts, I've talked with both of them on that.
We talked too, but this is a zoning issue.
I understand, but I think it should be done. That's all I'm wanting to say. But I wanted to be sure that Terry didn't get all the blame for the dog problem.
I understand. Appreciate you, gentlemen.
I'm a dog lover. I had to go home and let mine out before I come down here tonight and I made a special point to get off early to do so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Kay and I've been old up for three months and my mother have been old up for 10 years. Mr. Terry had moved the shop up there and that man would give you the shirt off of his back. I towed up my car two weeks ago and I was hit by an 18-wheeler. I called him. This man stayed on side of the road with me for two hours till the police got there. He got my daughter car two days before that. He got my other daughter car two days for that. He fixing my daughter car now and painting it everything. And like I say, I live two houses down from his shop and he don't bother me. But I also live in the back, my house, you can see Norton Avenue from my house. And it's a house that's backed up and nice and stuff. Why ain't everybody talking about that? I mean, this man would give you the shirt off of his back and, you know, I have no problem with it. And I have asthma, real bad asthma, and my son have it. And his shop is two doors down from us and he is painting my daughter's car as we speak.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any council, anything?
Hey, Mr. Will, Mr. Willingham, I think, he spoke about...
Anybody else that wants to speak against it? Well, we kind of got, go ahead. If you've got something short to say. Something different?
Yeah.
Okay. You promise, not the same thing, all right? Something different?
Something different.
All right.
You come down South Main. You turn left. You turn right, go on Norton Avenue. Right to your left is Cars. It's been a body shop there for 25 years. Not that far from the church and you can see it. Only difference is it's about 25 feet. His is about 30 feet. Same place, within, within 55 feet of each other. Same place, within- within fifty-five feet of each other. I don't see the big deal. I know y'all do.
Council members, anything else? Ms. Stewart?
Well, I know, uh, I know we- we've heard a lot of love given here today for animals and other things, but I'm gonna tell you, one thing I have love for is our neighborhoods.
Amen.
And, um, I know as part of, um, this council, serving on this council for almost sixteen years and, um, with a couple mayors and the rest of the council who's been here the majority of the time, the focus of this council has always been to protect our neighborhoods. And, um, and- and I still believe in protecting our neighborhoods. Um, we just have turned down a zoning request about a month ago for a commercial property. It used to be a rock store, which had been the same identical thing. Well, once we rezoned this property to commercial, if Mr. Bearden decides to-
Peardon.
Peardon decides to, excuse me, uh, decides to take his business own, this- this property is owned. It's gonna be commercial from here-
That's right.
-to forever. And, um, we just had a very, very nice community event in the Greeley Park this weekend, where the churches, the neighborhoods, it was all about building and lifting up our neighborhoods. We've done a lot of great things in our neighborhoods. And, um, the- the comments about the houses being built, that they will be boarded up, I can point to you several houses that have been built around the Greeley Park, that families are loving their homes in there, and, um, they're very nice homes. And, um, again, I'm- I'm a stout supporter of our neighborhoods, of our residents, because once that in- that- that encouragement starts coming into your neighborhoods, there's no ending to it. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that- that we deny this request.
Whoever first, by Mr. Stewart?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. I'd entertain any further discussion. Ms. Peardon?
Have y'all looked at ten pictures, look at that neighborhood?
We probably majority it.
Go ahead and clean it up.
Well, Mr. Peardon?
'Cause it's a mess. 'Cause I had to clean mine up, put my fence up, so there can be problems for that neighborhood's cleaned up like y'all think you're, uh, praising it down there? 'Cause it's not. Do y'all see the pictures? Do y'all, have y'all even been on Norton Avenue?
Probably, wait, wait, hey, what, yeah, we all have been.
You probably have, but-
We all have.
We all have.
On every rezoning-
Is Norton Avenue a pretty place to live?
Now, as a matter of fact, I'm looking at your pictures here, and I- I do agree with the fact that if- if you put your wall up, it will probably be a- a- an improvement to the neighborhood.
That's right.
We cannot make you put your wall up.
I'm asking to, I want to.
I know you want to.
I had to put a fence up out front to hide the cars, and I'm the only one that had to do it. So what am I supposed to do with that land I had bought? Would you build, if I give you the deed to the land, would you build your house back there?
Yes, sir.
I didn't quite say.
I'm not in the residential building business.
Sure.
I'm not in the building business.
No, I figured you, uh, you might swap that good neighborhood down there.
But- but I can assure you one thing, Mr. Peardon, if you give us the deed to all that property, I guarantee you, we could find someone like Homes For Hope would come down there to build brand-new houses like they've done somewhere else. So we'd be happy to take that deed. If you just wanna deed it over, I'm sure our Economic Community Development Department would take it.
Hey, wait a second, okay? Now, we're not gonna talk out of order right now.
Just let me have my pictures back, I'm done. But the way they were placed on a straight downer.
We had a first and a second, we're in discussion. Anything else? All those in favor in denying the request, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimously. I have several items of new business. The first item is request consideration of a paving resolution to the Anderson County, the Anderson County Transportation Committee and the South Carolina Department of Transportation. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of background comments. Um, I do appreciate Maurice McKenzie, his staff, especially Michael Gay. They've ridden about every street in the city, and we've tried to prioritize those for you. It's- it's especially important this year in the fact that the state legislature has allocated seven million dollars to be spent in Anderson County on secondary roads. That goes along with the normal two to three million that the, uh, the ATC, ACTC, uh, does provide for paving. What's really important for Anderson is sixty- the city is sixty-five percent of the roads within the city limits are in the state secondary system. Now, in the process of evaluating these roads, we use the DOT's ranking system, so we understand there's a lot of them that are really bad. Fifty percent of the rainy is based on the condition of the road, another twenty percent on daily traffic, ten percent on economic community input, and another twenty on population affected. I would like just to say this, as we pass these resolutions on, understand that all these dollars you're talking about to go to paving, they're taxpayer dollars, they're taxpayers' money. They are administered by Anderson County for their tax dollars, CTC, which takes the gas tax or DOT. So all you can do is make your wishes known to them, and they've been pretty astute at considering those. They may not take them in the exact order you send them, but they do look at them and they are considered. So what we would recommend is that, uh, they're starting to move quickly on deciding which roads that will be done. We'd recommend that you approve these three resolutions, and we get those in the hands of the county, the CTC, and the Department of Transportation tomorrow.
Thank you. I know that the list was distributed, um, last week with the packets, so hopefully everybody's got a chance to look at it. Are there any comments, questions?
Other than the fact that these, a lot of these roads needed paving for a long time.
Yes.
So it's- it's wonderful to be able to know that some of these will be paved. And in that respect, I'd like to make a motion that we pass all three, can we do that, pass all three at one time?
Uh, I wouldn't, uh, if you group it that way, what do you think? Frankie, do we need to pass them individually? Let's take one motion.
Uh, then the first one would be-
No, you do them all at one time, I'm sorry.
All at one time?
All, okay. Okay, can I make that motion?
Second.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor, it's aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, there will be three tabs, so if each of you will sign those three tabs. Thank you.
And we appreciate the Anderson County Transportation Committee and the state too. I- I think one of the bigger issues would be when the, uh, our state representatives reconvene in Columbia in January is to address like Mr. Lockridge said, we've-
More needed.
Was, in this city and all over the state, we're so far behind on a lot of paving. So hopefully, those decisions can be made in January. Our second item is request a consideration of contract and other expenses for the improvement of Watson Park. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to recognize that Bobby Bevel and Chris Everhart, who've been involved with this project, are here. So if you have question beyond what- what I might tell you, they're available. And what I'd start off with, this is gonna be a repeat of the Greeley Park to a lot of extent, which had its grand opening on Saturday and was certainly well-received. What you've done to date, you have already pre-purchased the shelter, which is the model that we're using in the parks. And so this bid is actually to provide the rest of the work, and then the shelter will be installed. So it will include the site grading, installation of a concrete sidewalk. There's also an asphalt drive with two handicap parking spaces. There'll be a shelter pad before the installation, and then the shelter construction, the stabilization of the site with sod. Uh, this is part of your recreation master plan. Again, you approved on August the tenth, the shelter. Uh, this bid was advertised in the Anderson Independent Mail on the ninth, sixteenth of August, posted on the city website. You had five bidders. The low bidder is actually Earth Materials out of Belton. They were the contractor in the Greeley Park case. Funds are coming from hospitality fund, and therefore, we'd recommend you award this bid to the low bidder, Earth Materials Incorporated, forty-one thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Ms. Lockridge?
Um, the other day, my wife and I rode past Greeley Park to see what the shelters look like that- that they have down there. They're really nice shelters. Uh, I'm excited about this, and I think this is one of the good improvements for- for Watson Park. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and adopt this.
I agree.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Lockridge, second by Mr. John Roberts. Any other discussion? All those in favor, it's aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Our third item is request consideration and appointment to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of our members of the Accommodation Tax Committee, Shanice Williams, is no longer with the Quality Inn, so that position is open. The staff would like to recommend the appointment of the innkeeper at the Blackley Inn. That's Rebecca Purefoy, I think I got it right. And, uh, so she would be serving along with the six existing members. That's Cindy Suddles, John Doolittle, Larry Lynette, Summer Fredrick, Chris Glenn, and Vicki Color. So we'd recommend that you appoint, uh, Rebecca Pure Floyd, to the position, unexpired position. And they have work coming up next month, as they will be considering the allocation of your accommodation tax dollars, and those are, that is the hotel tax. Okay?
Thank you. Any- any comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve this, ma'am?
Uh, first by Mr. Harbin.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, it's aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That appointment passes unanimously. We'd like to thank her for filling in that- that role and- and the work also that the, um, A-Tax Committee does. Our next item is request consideration to purchase three buses for the Transit Department. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask Keith Scott if he'll make his way to the podium in case you again have some questions on the details. Appreciate all the work he's been doing to bring the bus fleet up. You know, there was an old saying by a former mayor that, uh, the difference between a town and a city is the city has a transit system for its citizens. And so, uh, certainly proud to- to add to the fleet and improve it. And I think one of the really neat parts today is we are becoming more environmentally conscious and cost-conscious in these purchases. You probably had a chance to read the backup. What we're asking you to do tonight is to approve two CNG, which is compressed natural gas buses. One's a thirty-two foot, one's a thirty-five foot, and one diesel, uh, bus that's a thirty-five foot. That diesel's particularly for the Tri-County Tech Route. You currently have seven buses in your fleet, this will take you to eight. Uh, the bidding process, National Bus Sales was the only bidder, but it was a low bidder, and we have compared the price to our former purchases from them. They do provide the Eldorado Bus, which is currently what we're using, or at least our latest ones. All this meets the FTA guidelines, the old buses that are being retired, and they'll be, uh, put for public auction. They have lived their useful life, so again, a good replacement. The good thing about this is, uh, the CNG buses, the fuel costs are cheaper, and the environmental discharge is extremely less, so a good move for- for our city in moving- in moving that way. You may have seen a couple of weeks ago, we'll actually be able to refuel at the Piedmont Natural Gas CNG Stational Twenty-Eight Bypass, which is extremely close to our Public Works facility. As far as the funding, uh, again, all the funds are in place. Most of this is coming either from the FTA or the DOT. And if you remember, you have from the endowment back with Duke, you put aside money to match these capital purchases, and those funds are available. So here's what you're gonna do. If you approve it, you'll be buying, uh, the first bus for, I think it's, uh, one for four fifty-eight, uh, I'm getting lost here, four fifty-eight, six seventy-nine. Fifteen percent of that, sixty-eight, will come by your local match, the rest from the FTA. The nice part about the other two, they'll be a hundred percent funded. Uh, one is FTA and DOT, that's three ninety-nine for the thirty-two foot. And the final diesel bus, which is under a contract with the county to run to and from, uh, the- the four U Transit Tri-County Tech routes, we call it. Hundred percent of that's funded either by the FTA and matched by Anderson County. So we recommend that you award the bids, as I've covered those, to National Bus Sales for those three buses.
Thanks, sir.
Any- any particular reason why, uh, the county wouldn't go with one of these natural gas buses to have a diesel?
Well, we kinda had talked to them in the- in the very beginning of the talks, and we knew pretty much where they wanted to be from a dollar standpoint. So we were kind of staying within that price range that we had talked to them about before.
Diesels are cheaper initially, okay?
Are we gonna, one, sometime or another, gonna have a fielding station in- down at Garage R for this?
It i- it is under consideration, uh, Council Roberts, uh, so we don't have a timeframe, we'll have to ask Kerry.
Seems like we would save some money, other money through-
Well, just to- just to add to that, we do get a discount from the retail price through Piedmont Natural Gas, yes.
And I think also, I was at that ribbon cutting, I probably know too much about compressed natural gas. But, um, but- but I think, you know, just listening to, um, firstly, I think Representative Duncan had a good handle on, you know, why, uh, I guess one of the big issues is the natural gas that's on our coastline. And- and- and being allowed to, um, possibly produce that, and our brothers and sisters on the coast, cities and towns are- are a little skeptical of that, but, um, but I think that station is completely built by Piedmont Natural Gas-owned Spinks Property.
Right.
And I understand there- there probably a lot of, apparently, it's very easy to, um, switch from gas to compressed natural gas. I mean, it's just not easy, but it's a- it's a fixture, and I think a lot of fleets are going toward, uh, compressed natural gas, so. But I don't think, I- I don't, I didn't get the impression that they were gonna build another one anytime soon. I think it was a probably pretty expensive investment.
May I move that we approve the purchase of these two buses by the transit system?
Thank you, ma'am. I have a first.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harbin.
Three buses.
Three buses.
Yes.
Three buses. Further discussion?
When- when will be the delivery on these?
Uh, approximately ten months.
Always amazing.
Anything else?
At least we'll get them.
All those in favor, it's aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimously. Our fifth item is, um, regards to Transportation Department. Again, it's request consideration to purchase a vehicle. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Within the, uh, transit system, there are a couple administrative vehicles that you probably see from time to time. Uh, this particular one, we currently have a Ford Explorer that will retire if you buy this new one. And what we use this for is primarily shift change, employees come and go from the Public Works. But it also serves, if we have a bus down, it can support the routes. And if there's deviation request, you know, a person that's off the route, we have a deviation system. They can call in ahead of time, and we'll go get them to the right place. Again, it's replacing a two thousand five Ford Explorer. The cost of this vehicle is twenty-four thousand, eight fifty-five, that is the state contract price. And again, like the buses, the FTA, uh, will pay for eighty percent of that, and then the twenty percent match will come from your city, again, from the endowment interest that moves over. Uh, so we would recommend you award this to- to the state contractor, Dick Bailey Ford in Spartanburg, for state contract price.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, comments?
Couldn't get any GNC for that?
Not yet.
Make a motion to approve this, ma'am?
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor, it's aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Appreciate it. Our next last item is request consideration of a engineering contract for the replacement of the Mall Road and Witchwood Drive pump stations. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Crowd's kinda thinning, I see who we had left. We do have Jeff Colwell, our Utilities Director, who has, uh, must have been spearheading this particular project. We also have from Design South, your selected engineer on this project, Chuck Joy, who's a principal, and Keith Overstreet, who is actually working closely with Jeff and his staff on this C-MOM program. If you remember, the C-MOM program is a lot about, uh, rebuilding the underground infrastructure of the wastewater treatment system. And so where we are back in, um, April, you approved us to move forward, Design South, to help us complete a preliminary engineering report, which has been done and submitted to DEHEC and has initial approval. So the next step is to actually put this out for, uh, design, and then bidding, and then oversee the construction. And what this is, is if you remember, we evaluated all the pump stations, and these are your two oldest ones. Believe it or not, they were part of the original wastewater treatment system installed by the city back in nineteen sixty-five. So they're fifty years old, and I see lots of purchase orders to try to keep those two systems working. systems working. The other piece of this is, is really good, that where they're located, and as the city is growing, we have some opportunities to combine pump stations. And even though the city of Anderson is extremely fortunate to have only four here, six, here's an opportunity to maybe get to four. The desire was to have no pump stations, but our terrain does, does make that we have a few. So, what we're asking you to do tonight, we expect, if you remember the cost estimates, to do these pump stations to be roughly 6.8 million, that you would spend over time to get these in. The contract before you is with Design South. They were one of two engineering firms that you selected in your request qualifications process, and then you negotiated the contract with them to do the utilities work on these stations in the CMOM program. So, this contract is $689,900. It's broken down into several phases, 6, 6, 4, 94 for design and bidding, 50 for right-of-way acquisition, and then another $145,000 to oversee the building of the projects. Again, I have Jeff, Chuck, and Keith here, if you have any questions. But, we feel this price is appropriate. General Engineering contracts run 10 to 15% of the total cost. This is about 11%. So, we would recommend that you proceed with this contract with Design South.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
I had some, Mayor.
Mr. Roberts?
Earlier today, and I think John just did a great job of answering most of the questions. One thing that's still kind of outstanding, Jeff, maybe you can elaborate real quick on it, if you would, please. The, the $145,000 rate to oversee the project and make sure it's in compliance and whatever, that, that's a consultant's rate, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is that not something we could perform in-house through? I mean, can you just explain that in a little further?
It is something that we can evaluate later if we do. I mean, that is something normally that, or I won't say normally, but sometimes we look at that part after we bid the project and have the contractor and approve that with the construction contract. Through the CMOM program, we are going to be adding staff, and that staff is going to be busy already. So, I'm not sure if it, if that staff will be able to handle that job or not. But, it is something we can evaluate later, if that's something you want to look at.
If you'd like, then, Council Roberts, what we could do is certainly go ahead with the design and bidding, and then Jeff could report back his findings. You know, again, at that time, whether or not he feels the staff would be in a position to carry on those services.
Thank you.
And this, and this, these fees are over 30 months. So, it's like two and a half years worth of fees that are, that are going into this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anything else?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second? I have a first by Ms. Harbin, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this unanimously.
Thank you.
Chuck didn't even have to speak. We're not through yet.
Our last item is request consideration of a construction contract for the James Street, Hunter Drive, and Henry Avenue Sanitary and Stormwater Sewer Improvements. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just took a minute to look back on the agenda, just to reflect on it. But, we're making improvements in our recreation in our city, our transportation in our city, and also our infrastructure for wastewater tonight. So, a lot of good things are going on to make sure that the city's infrastructure is in good shape, in good place for a long time to come. So, with the final one, this is one of a couple of major projects that you do each year. This one's been around for a little while. This is in Old North Anderson in Councilman Loffrige's Ward. What it is, is to replace the wastewater treatment infrastructure that's in that ground, in the areas that are covered by James Street, Hunter Drive, and Henry Avenue. As we got into the design of that, we also knew that in the middle of one of the areas, some of the old stormwater pipe was badly deteriorated sinkholes. So, the nice part about this project, it is that the city is able to do a combination of wastewater and the stormwater at one time. A little bit more behind this is, in the wastewater system, this is a system that was put in back in the 1930s, and the wastewater lines are old, and they're undersized. So, you'd be upgrading those lines. You'll actually do 300, it's 3,745 feet of new 8-inch sewer lines. So, to kind of give you some perspective, it'll cover 21 manholes, and then we will unconnect and reconnect 35 residential customers along that area. As far as the stormwater piece, it's 1,100 feet of reinforced concrete pipe that will replace the current dilapidated pipe. Again, it runs through Hunter Drive, pretty much. And again, it'd be, it will include 180 feet of 18-inch connector pipe, seven catch basins, and other restoration activities to improve that area as well. This was bid out. Bids were received, public bids publicly opened on August 20th. It's a good-sized project. We were pleased. They had two local bidders. Don Moorhead was the low bid at $1,561,420. We've had experience with Don and his company. We also had J&amp;M Construction, which has done a lot of work in this area for us, too, $1,872,850. So, we would recommend that you award the bid to Don Moorhead Construction for the amount stated. And just so you'll know, that the funding for this project would be a million, 2,000 from sewer, and then the stormwater will be putting in 559. These are budgeted. They're allocated, and they don't change any of the other priorities. So, certainly, again, Jeff and Chuck, I also saw Ben Walford, who's been heading up this project, is present too. So, they can answer any detailed questions you might have. I didn't ask them when they would actually start, assuming you award it, and when we would hope to be finished.
That would be my, that would have been my question.
That's the one the citizens are going to ask you.
That's the one they're going to ask me.
It's, it's a, it's a six-month project? It's a six-month total project, but we would be looking at approximately, probably about a month before getting started.
About a month before you get started?
Getting the contractor, the notice of award signed by us and the contractor, and letting them order their materials and get started.
And you did say that, that some of that stormwater project will be a liner that goes under some of the property. Am I correct?
Adam speak to that.
I've got to recognize Adam Cromer. He's in the stormwater piece, and I do appreciate him and Jeff working together to get this project done for us.
Yes, sir. From Henry Avenue down to Glenwood Avenue will be a slipline pipe system, like similar to what we did over at Stone Creek last year.
That, that's from Henry to where now?
Henry Avenue down to Glenwood Avenue. It's about 180 feet.
It actually runs very close to, there's not much right-of-way. It runs along property lines. So, there's not any way to get equipment in. Again, Stone Creek was the same. Is it a good process? Worked well? Stone Creek, I think they've been pleased.
Well, the situation we have there now is not good because we have all the, the holes in the, between the pieces of concrete. I've had those for years, and it's just something that needed to be fixed. And then, the, the fact that the, the sewer line was such, in such bad shape, has been needing to be replaced as well for a long time. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this and give the, the construction contractor, Don Moorhead Construction.
I have a first by Ms. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion?
Just ask one question, and maybe it's a Chuck Joy question. I know on the stormwater side, we're talking about putting in seven catch basins. And, you know, those are great, but with the new technology, they don't make any type of catch basins that are rear, real sturdy. Because as I rode through my district today, I probably saw eight or nine catch basins that just busted all up, nothing but holes there. And that's where all the trash is getting down into the storm drains, where a car runs over and busts it. And then we can't never get it fixed because the state don't come fix them. And is there any type of new technology out that can, you can make those things more enforceable or anything?
Mr. Stewart, good question. Working with your staff, these catch basins are necessary because we're going to be receiving, obviously, water that is on the surface. There also will be, really junction boxes for the 48-inch pipe that's going to be replaced. That being said, they're going to be quite sturdy, and they're also not going to be subject to traffic because they're going to be, at the law, mostly in the aisle, or the median, so to speak, which is rather substantial. So, they are, will be robust structures, and they have, they meet the test of your department.
At some, at some point, I just, maybe our staff can get with Mr. Joy and his firm to see if they have anything out there that can get us a real sturdy catch basin. Because as you know, as you turn it up one street and go to the side, a car hits them, they just bust all in, and they just sit there. And so, I don't know whether the technology is what it is today. I just figure there's a new product.
There are new products and there are new systems. I'd also argue that some of the catch basins that we have failing, just like our pump stations that y'all agreed to report with, are probably 40 or 50 years old, and the concrete's deteriorated and whatever. Yes, it challenges well.
Thank you. Thank you. We had a first and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd imagine with the, the only bad thing about having a, a city that has the historical value that our city has, is that some of that stuff out there is really, really old.
Yes.
And we'll be having a discussion for years to come, probably past my time. Administrative briefing. Mr. Moore?
Only the calendar, as we get midway through September. Still like to recognize that the block party is going on at each Thursday night at the Carolina Renn Park. But the city has three other special events going on there this month. This Friday night will be movie at Carolina Renn Park, 7:45, The Avengers. That's been quite successful for our community. Then on the 22nd, a little different wrinkle to music in the park, is the city does its own sounds in the park on the 22nd from 7:00 to 9:00. And then, really, to get you ready for the holidays, we want you fit, we're going to do a boot camp fitness in Carolina Renn Park at 9:00 AM on Saturday, the 26th. And so, we have one more council meeting this month as well. Mr. Mayor, that's all we have in administrative briefing, and there may be some other comments. I would say that you have two items in executive session. One's an economic development item. To discuss a particular contract, do not expect is our compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, and we will put it on the next agenda if you so approve the contract, okay? So, it'd be opportunity for any of the citizens to review that contract before the next council meeting. Same thing would be true on the personnel. The city manager's contract, should you approve it and direct us to proceed, it will be on the next agenda for your vote. So, there'll be no action on either one of these tonight. They would be possibly referred for action at the next council meeting.
Thank you, sir. I entertain a motion to go in the executive session.
So moved.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Here.
I entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are out of executive session. In executive session, we talked about the two items listed, economic development and the personnel matter in regards to the city manager's contract. We're authorized, the city attorney, Frankie McLean, to move forward with both of those documents, both of those agreements, to be on our agenda for the next council meeting. Anything else?
Make a motion adjourned.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.